I'd like to call this meeting to order today for our Thursday, June 16th, 2022 Board of Supervisors Budget Work Session. All right, our first item on the agenda is the Budget Work Session, and I will turn that over to Mr. Tadlock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your desk is an updated Possible Reductions/Additions list. I don't know how the board would like to proceed, if you'd like to go over that list, or if you'd like to go through the budget, through the pages. I'll leave that up to the board.
It's a pleasure to board. What is our seventh kind of?
I can either go through the updated list of reductions, additions. We can go through those items, or if, I don't know if the board has any other questions related to the budget. I can go through each of the pages in the budget on the expenditure side.
Sure, I have no problem with that, but I know we need to pass the, we need to pass the school board. We need to vote on the school board budget. If that, we've got people that 12-month employee is waiting on the contracts. And I wouldn't want to do that to anyone. So, that's why I am. You want to start with the, start with your possible reductions?
Sure, some of them are going to be repeats from the last meeting, but of course, the reduction of professional services in the Board of Supervisors budget, page six, item 3002, a reduction of $25,000. I feel like we could keep that reduction. The next item, under the general liability insurance, I received some additional information from Bay Corp. And I feel like we're going to need to keep that at the amount that was budgeted. So, we would need to put that $2,882 back into the budget. Page 30, the CAD maintenance, reduction of $17,145 under the emergency services budget. That was also included in the Sheriff's Office budget, so that's why we were removing that line item, or reducing that line item, excuse me. Page 36, Sanitary District, various line items that we're requesting an additional position would be a reduction of $39,093.92 if that was removed from the budget. Under the social services, page 39, a reduction of $4,000 for the food bank, reduction of $52,280 for the free health clinic, reduction of $10,000 for the Northumberland Little League, that was a request for a lawnmower, and reduction of $15,000 for the Boys and Girls Club. Also, new to the list was the salary adjustments for the Sheriff's Office, and that would be various line items. And to keep the 5% would be $23,992 reduction. I don't know if the board has any other questions as far as related to the capital projects. One item was the sheriff's vehicle, it was being requested for five vehicles, reducing that by one, at a cost of $50,000. And there is one additional item, and it's a copy on your desk, is the Remote Area Medical Event hosted by RCC. And I believe this was something that they had done several years ago, and that's a cost of $1,500. They're trying to raise, I believe it's $18,000 for that event. So, I put that in the budget for your consideration. They were all the updates I had as far as discussions and different things.
The Rappahanna Community College quest, is this, how many other jurisdictions is this request going to?
That I'm not sure.
Because I know they've held this in the past, and we've never received a request before.
I can try and answer any questions that you all may have on any of those items.
How does the board feel about any of these possible cuts?
I'm good with the additional funds that are no longer needed, like a general liability insurance, CAD maintenance, as long as we got a CAD maintenance. The reduction in the professional services in the Board of Supervisors, as long as we don't need it. I like to try to hold on to the sanitary district position. Think we need to try to hold on to the Sheriff's Office request. And I don't think we need to delay or remove any capital improvement projects, because the more we put off, the more we're going to have to catch up on. And each year, it's not going to be any cheaper. That's just, that's just my opinion. I'm not saying we can fund all of the capital improvement this year, but we don't need to wipe that slate clean. I think we need to move forward and get some stuff done.
Yeah, we've got limited funds in that.
That's right.
In that category, too.
That's right.
Very limited funds. But like Jim said, we still need to get some covered this year. And I'm for keeping the request from the sheriff into. So what y'all are saying is not taking that one vehicle from the Sheriff's Department?
That's right. That's what I'm saying.
It's part of capital improvement, correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, not taking that.
He's requested three?
No, he requested six.
Six, okay.
We got six last year. And we bought, was it three of them or four? Was it three or four through the CARES Act money?
I don't think he would be requesting these things if he didn't need them. So, I'm going to vote to keep that in.
I know he wants to change, he likes to change them at about $115,000, but I don't know, those vehicles still have a lot of life into them. I don't know if we could stretch it, go back the way we used to do it. We did it with much longer life. State Police does it at a much higher mileage.
I'm not concerned by the State Police. If he, being the head of Sheriff's Department, if he think he need them, I'm going to vote for it, to keep them in.
I don't want to, with any vehicles, I don't want to see us in the predicament we were in a couple of years ago with building and zoning where we had vehicles with 300,000 miles on it, and we were paying more in maintenance each year to keep that vehicle going. And not only that, I'm looking at a deputy in pursuit, having a vehicle that's safe enough for him to be in pursuit.
Yeah, it's a lot of things you've got to look at.
And that's, I'm looking at that as a life safety issue. Like I said, that's my opinion, and it's five of us up here.
Sheriff makes the decision on his mileage, and I do respect his opinion on that. But, you know, just looking at it, that it could be a possible cut, but if he needs that many vehicles, that's up to him on that.
I'm good, I can answer questions if you want.
Sheriff Bechen, good to see you here.
Thank you.
Glad to see you here. We're not trying to take anything really away from you, just trying to stretch the money.
Well, I may be able to help you with that. I don't know if it's, is the, was the Gov. Deals money included in this?
Not on the revenue side, no.
So, I've sold two vehicles that we've received money on this fiscal year for about $15,000. I just sold the two military surplus Hummers for almost $20,000. We should have that money in a couple of weeks. So, there's $35,000 you're not looking at. That's coming in from sales of surplus vehicles.
So, if the, if this was reduced to, cut of 35 and give you 15 more, you would be whole, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Rock.
That's a, that's a big help.
We've had good luck on selling vehicles through Gov. Deals. I'm learning people will buy just about anything and pay more money than you'll get on trade-in for it.
What kind of vehicle are you thinking about purchasing?
If I can still order Chevrolet Tahus, I may try one or two of those. I'll do another Ford Explorer. I've got a pickup truck on hold for myself, which my truck can go to sanitary district, because I think they need a vehicle. And then, we may do another SUV for Detective.
What does State Police, such Richard Rock, that they use Explorers?
They're switching to Explorers, yeah.
Do you know what they, what their credentia or stop using mileage is?
It's been a few years, probably 120.
I knew they had some issues with the Explorers years past, but the exhaust issue, they resolved that?
That's on the old model. They've changed model in 2020.
All right, yeah, no, I see the new model.
Yes, so. I didn't mean to interrupt your meeting.
No, nothing.
It sounded like you may have had questions, so I can help you.
I was a good at it, Ronnie, thank you.
That's right, glad you came forward. That answers a lot of questions right there.
Good.
So, we can, instead of doing 50, we can put minus 15, right?
Yeah.
The math works out, but the vehicles, I may be able to squeeze on mark if you go. The big ones, I do 50,000 per vehicle, because that's the marked price.
Right.
That's what it costs us to equip a marked vehicle out the door. I can do unmarks cheaper. I just don't know what the price is going to be year to year. So, yeah, I could probably squeeze by if you just discount the 15,000 and use the money from Gov. Deals.
Well, at 10, would that be better?
Look, I'll take anything.
I know that.
Well, yeah.
I'm probably looking the other way, too.
Yeah, I could do 15, I could do 15. If you want to just do 10, I'm happy with that. If 15 would help you guys, I think it would help me, and we can reach some common ground there. I'll make it stretch if I can get that fifth vehicle.
Just to make sure you've got four tires on it.
Yes, sir.
And an engine. And an engine.
Yeah, and engines.
You have all tires, but you don't have an engine unless you're going to be Flintstones.
I won't stretch it that far.
How many more Johnny you have to sell this year? Once you get the new six, new one, or whatever you get, take that amount out of service?
At least be four. I probably have, I've got, I'm heavy on spares right now, so I could probably do five and get money on back on all five. We're getting into the point now where I can start reusing the equipment, like in-car cameras. I didn't have enough to go around. We finally caught up to every marked car has a in-car camera, and they're universal, so I can take it out of a car I'm getting rid of, put it in a new car. That's about a $5,000 savings. So, once I start that, I can knock down the price of these vehicles by at least $5,000, beginning next year.
Well, you're not doing light bars like you used to, is that right?
We're doing inside, so the lights are inside the windshield, and then, yes.
That's saving some money, but well, you didn't have to worry about getting new bars if you got a new type of vehicle like a Tahoe, someone Explorer.
Well, some of these lights are vehicle-specific.
Yeah.
So, the front windshields are vehicle-specific, the rear lights, some of those I can reuse in different model vehicles.
What about, since you talked to the cameras, what about digital storage of all those pictures that are being taken?
So, we have a 54 terabyte storage at the office. There's only two people that can manually upload those, because they can be erased from, on the USB, so myself and the major are the only two that can do it. We have to go into the car, get the USB out, download it, and put the USB back in the car. Takes about 10 minutes.
And the same thing for your cameras on the person?
Now, everybody can download their own camera, but they can not manipulate the data at all.
Okay. Because I know that's becoming an issue, especially like the Commonwealth Attorney's Office having to review all that data. How long would you archive downloads?
So, it depends on if it's evidence, that's much longer. If it's non-evidentiary, we can go two to three years, and then we can erase them. Good, thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Board have, board have any other questions or comments? Or do you, or do you want Mr. Tadlock to go page by page through the budget? Mr. Tadlock, do you have anything else before, before a motion need to be passed?
I guess just clarification on the capital vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. Does the board want to, instead of doing the 200,000 for the four vehicles, you want to do 215 for the five, since, was it 35 that you had?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, yeah, so 250 minus 35 would give us the 215 to make up that difference for the 250.
I would agree with that, but if we get, if you end up short because of that, I don't have any problem adding that back in to make sure you can get a car with four tires and an engine.
As long as you feel comfortable.
Yeah, I, again, the unmarks I can stretch. But limited equipment, protect us up there on that.
Are you going to buy a unmarked just because you got the money or because you need it? I want to make sure we do that first.
No, well, it's needed, the, you all asked for, who was getting one? I think there's an unmarked Charger that is eight years old. And it's July, idle engine hours. And most of us go to the grocery store, lawnmower, we cut a car. When we go on call, we can't cut cars. So, we count hours as a formula for miles. So, one hour is 33 miles, give or take. So, you add that to the odometer reading, and that gives you an estimate on the engine transmission components that are running. It's as if it's that minimal miles we're getting. So, that's the oldest car we're having problems with it, so that's definitely the need.
Yeah, if you have problems, you need to get rid of it.
Well, it's a Charger, we've always had problems with the Charger. Don't say too much, might be somebody ahead of us. That'd be up to them.
It's sold as is, isn't it, Sheriff?
If I ever come in and request to buy a Charger, please deny it. I don't, they're not. The ones we have are not good at all. It ended up costing more maintenance cost than the vehicle actually cost in the beginning.
It's time to be replaced. Frankly, I don't have a problem keeping the full amount. I'd rather see a car replaced that doesn't have more expenses to maintain than to run, so I would just keep the, without any reduction on the capital improvement then. I'd rather have, make sure you got a workable vehicle. It's nice that you did what you did, and I appreciate the offer, but I want to make sure you got a vehicle.
All right, we can put that right back in there.
Yeah, just don't delete anything from the capital improvement.
That'd be fine. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right. What other comments does the board have?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, to answer Mr. Long's question, I guess we would just need guidance on the list of items that we had discussed. I don't know if the board wants to vote on those individually, or how you all want to handle those.
All right, it's a pleasure to board.
All right, I'd say my suggestion is to vote on them individually.
So, Long, you want to make a motion?
Yes.
Do what you, whatever you want to do.
If you're going to do individual motions, you have however many line items to do individual motions.
Well, he's going to, he's going to read them off anyway, so, okay. We can do it.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can read them all.
Yes.
So, again, the first one was the reduction of professional services of $25,000, and that's under the Board of Supervisors budget.
You want separate motions, or you want them all together?
Let's put them all together.
Which way you want it?
However, the board wishes to do that.
I said in the visit, we can put them all together.
Was that Jim, you want to put them all together?
Yeah.
Is that all right, rest of the board?
It's fine.
All right.
Let's do something.
Yes, all right.
All right, so if you're putting them all together, are we, you're taking out the Sheriff's Office vehicle?
Yeah.
So, you're leaving that fully funded?
Right.
So, what would your total be then?
The reduction of professional services, keep that coming out? General liability insurance is a wash now. CAD maintenance, keep that out?
Keep that out?
Yep.
All right.
All right, the position for the sanitary district?
Pleasure to board on that one.
I'd like to see it stay in there for now, that we take a decision on it later. Can we do that?
You could budget it and not appropriate the monies at this time.
Yeah. Because we don't know what's going to work out there.
All right, so you want to budget that and not appropriate it?
For now, yes.
Is that all right, rest of the board?
Unless you want to keep it in there, I'm.
I myself would rather let that stay in there.
Okay.
You want it to stay in there, Ronnie?
Let it be taken out.
We've got more people down there now than we've ever had. I don't feel like we need another one right now, while we in positions to do it when a very good chunk to run that sanitary district comes into the general fund, where it doesn't pay for itself.
All right, so you just want to leave it in there?
Yep, I do.
All right, all right, Mr. Tadlock.
So, leave that as being removed?
Yep, leave it as being removed.
All right, food bank?
Food bank?
Yep.
Do we give, what do we give, are we taking this out? What would it leave? Well, we do give them something, right?
We do provide them, I believe it's $1,000. I can double-check that for you real quick.
Yeah, it does, it's, they'll be level funded, that's, this is, the 4,000 is an increase over current.
Correct.
Okay.
The, yes, that is correct, it's $1,000.
How about the free health clinic?
That would be level funding them. The 52, 280 was the increase that they were asking for.
Yeah, when they presented it, they asked for level funding, too. They did not include the 52 at the time.
Okay. Little League? How about the Little League?
The 10,000, we do provide them $2,000 currently. The $10,000 request was for a lawnmower. So, the reduction of the $10,000, it would be level funding them at the $2,000 level.
Okay, how about the Boys and Girls Club?
Boys and Girls Club, we currently do not contribute to that organization. We do have some grant opportunity. We do have some grant opportunities with that, with the boys and girls club, but we do not fund them out of local funds. So, that would be putting them back to zero.
All right, is that okay for the board? All right, great, Mr. Tadlock.
All right, the next item was the sheriff's office salary adjustment.
That, that 5%, that would keep the 5%.
That, that would keep the 5%.
Yeah, we're required by the budget to have at least 5%, right? Or some, some.
Under the, the comp board?
Yeah.
You are required on the comp board to have that 5%. And now, that's 5% on the comp board salary, not 5% on the county salary. But we don't break those out in our budget. We just do 5% on the county salary.
All right, how's the board feel about that?
So, you're saying we, we do 5% on the county side, right?
Correct. By reducing it 23,992, we provide the 5% across the board in the, on the sheriff salaries. The, there were some additional adjustments for compression and years of service that the sheriff had presented earlier, and that's what was being looked at.
So, what the sheriff said, how much would that? Do you have that? I know 5%, I realize that, but how much more?
The, it would be 23,992, additional monies.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, all right. I think we should keep it in. The reason I'm saying that, we don't know. We want to keep the good deputies that we have, and we don't want other counties to get so far ahead of us that we have people jumping, and that's happening a whole lot nowadays.
Sheriff, if you want to come up, John, I'll tell you why I got some concerns with the county. It was supposed to be to support the compression rate and all that. But when I look at who's getting the big raises, it's all the ones that are already in the top tier. And you look at the color chart, I'll tell you, one deputy is all that gets any increase. One road deputy is all that gets any increase over the, what are yours? Top right on down.
Not the very top, not me. Not me.
No, almost top on down. I know you got that up, but I mean, they skip you and skip one other sergeant, and then the next five or six, then you get down there where the deputies are, and they get nothing.
Well, we've got a young group, and a lot of that's based on years of service. So, the 5% actually is more than the salary scale would have been. That's why it's green.
Some of these salary scales are, we're now already way above comp board suggested salary payers.
Because the, the county gives a supplement.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's right.
It's above what the comp board says on.
Everybody's above comp board. Everybody's, yes.
But not by these amounts, and some of these are making these, these, that's, that's why I have concern with it. There was station of road deputies that was showing to get an increase for them, the ones that over there, nights, weekends, and all.
Well, I could. Oh, and if we just did salary scale alone, and there was no 5%, their increase would be lower. So, the column all the way to the right, what you're looking at is, the green is 5% is greater than the salary scale.
Yeah.
The yellow, the salary scale is greater than the 5%. So, we went with what was better for the employee.
So, you got the larger increase is in the yellow.
No, the yellow is the salary scale is going to benefit that employee more than the 5%.
Yes.
And then the green is the 5% will benefit the employee more than the salary scale. So, we, we wanted the employee to get the best benefit of whatever they, they could get, whether it was 5% or the salary scale. That just breaks that apart. Now, I understand your concern about the, the.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Who set the salary scale?
I do.
You do, and you're the ones in your office?
Well, I set the, the pay scale, I, you know, I approved it. But coming in as a new sheriff, I, I set my commands.
That's, that's my concern. I mean, that doesn't one bit that these deputies deserve more money.
Well, we can certainly increase it if, we can certainly increase it if.
Well, we take all some of these up top down and slide it down. That would be my suggestion. I didn't say you, and I didn't say. For some of these in the yellow, I would adjust, that's where I'd go.
All right, how's the board feel about?
Sheriff, what, you're, you're trying to adjust the salary compression. I'll get you jumping up and down here, I know like that.
Well, it addresses salary compression, but what we created the salary scale for, two reasons. One, we've never had one.
Yeah, I know.
And two, it addresses competition, because Richmond County starts at 43, West Monmouth starts at 45, the town of Warsaw starts at 42. So, we need to, that's a trend. Now, Lancaster and the town of Kimborn are just a little bit below us currently. I don't know what they have in their budget right now. So, we're trying to address the competitive. As Mr. Long said, we, you get the higher salaries next door, things look good, people may go. So, that actually addresses three things.
Is any push by the Sheriff's Association to tell the comp board of those problems? I know they're pushing it on state lease. They really upped what they're proposing for them because of the competition from local governments stealing state troopers.
Yeah, so the comp, uh, the General Assembly passed a $42,000 starting salary through the comp board now. So, we should be getting a large chunk of change from the comp board for the comp board positions. That doesn't help the county positions. But it's a law, I, I briefly looked online, it was $78,000 more than like, than current year. That should be coming in.
Well, they should be equal between comp board position and county position, because they're both doing the same thing, but.
Correct.
The funding shouldn't have a bearing on that, because there's just as much danger regardless of what it does to funding.
Funding just lets you know what you're going to get in return.
Yeah. I'm familiar with salary compressions at the state.
There is salary compression as well coming from the comp board for deputies. So, that should be included as well in reimbursement.
Your budget doesn't reflect this then, the comp board adjustments?
It, it only reflects the 5%.
Right. But not, but there's extra, other extra compression and the 42,000, that, is that reflected in your request?
We, for something that we did. Now, they passed $100 per year from year three to year 30. We didn't know what was coming, but that, this does address compression. That's why you have one deputy, he's been there 20-plus years. He's going to see an increase of the salary scale. That's what it's designed to do. So, that's, you know, their longevity is going to count now. Well, if you pass it, it'll count.
It pass, it, it works for one year, then, then the question, it's got to be sustained, and the state never does a very good sustainability.
Correct.
They get excited one year and forget about it for five years.
Well, I think this was a good year for all employees. State, state supported because they had a large surplus. So, we fared well from the state side.
That's one of the problems, they got so much money, they don't know what to do with it.
I can help them with that.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, I understand it's a, it's a big jump, you know, the starting salary on this was 44 to stay competitive. So, that's 2,000 above comp board. Or will be 2,000 above comp board.
Any more questions for the sheriff?
I understand Ronnie's concern, but I also understand the compression piece and like that. We, we just did an action for the EMS to get them hazardous duty, try to make them competitive. So, I think we need, if we're going to do EMS to make them competitive with our neighbors, we need to do the same thing for the sheriff's office.
Well, I appreciate that.
But I agree that did something, sheriff, but it's who we're doing it for. That's what I don't agree with.
Well, I understand that.
All right. All right, any other questions for the sheriff? Thank you. You may be called back. All right, you need a motion to keep that in?
Yeah, I, I would need some direction from the board, how you all would like to proceed on that.
What does the board want to do, leave that in there?
Yeah, I'd like to leave that in.
Yeah, leave, yeah.
All right. So, you want to give us a total, Mr. Tadlock? Or make a motion to that effect?
He needs, he wants to, we want to figure first.
All right, so it would be a reduction of 162,518.92, if I did my math correct.
That's what I, that's what I came up with.
Okay.
518.92. What's that, how much?
162,518.92.
All right, you know you can make your motion.
Yes.
All right, that's your motion. All right, have a second.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, Mr. Tadlock.
All right, and just for the increase for the remote area medical, is the board want to keep that in the budget?
I'd like to get more information on it, to see what other counties have been requested and what, if anything, they've done.
Okay.
What's that for the?
For RCC, RAM.
I've got a county administrators meeting tomorrow, so I can talk to them there.
And where it comes worth, they can be added in later, 1,500 in.
No, we can do a supplemental appropriation for that amount.
All right, anything else the board want to add in?
I don't have enough.
We had no Christmas in?
Yes. We had talked about in, this is going to probably sound crazy for bringing it up now, but last two years, we've been asked by some citizens, and we made an effort last year, we were a little late on having the county set up better for the Christmas holidays. I'd like to see $2,500 put in the budget to be able to get some decorations and stuff to better prepare county government buildings for the Christmas holiday this year. We've had citizens come and talk to us, come to the meetings, and the last two years have been, the, the county buildings not looking so great during the holidays, and we need to do better.
I agree.
Yeah.
Is that a motion, Jim?
Yes.
I suck it. All right, you got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to read the motion exactly instead.
All right, Mr. Long, would you restate your motion, please?
Uh, the motion is to, uh, put money away.
Jimmy made the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion. I, I, my motion was $2,500 to help purchase some decorations for the county buildings for the Christmas holiday.
We started that last year.
Yeah, I remember.
We were going to do it, and we could not, we started too late. We couldn't get the supplies, so we figured we'd try to do it earlier this year, so.
You said 25?
Yes.
And 2,500 should be more than enough. We should have money left over, hopefully.
Hope so, but.
But we want to try to improve things here at the courthouse is to make it look more presentable for what the puppets asking for.
I agree with that.
All right. All right, got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? All right.
That was an increase of 2,500.
2,500. All right, any other items?
Okay, Mr. Tadlock, what do we need to do to bear to, to vote on the, the budget?
If, if the board doesn't have anything further, I would just need a motion for the overall budget. And then we've got several resolutions that we need to, to.
When you said overall budget, you're talking about the school board budget and everything overall, okay? I'm ready to make a motion.
We're going to review the school board budget, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, we have not reviewed the school board budget.
Well, we need to.
And that's what we're here for.
Okay, we need to.
So, we can start on that school board budget right now.
Okay.
If we're finished with the county budget.
Now.
The county portion of it, I mean.
From reading, I know all of it and read the information that's been sent down by the board, school board. And it does not require, in addition to funds, a request. There's, there's no extra money. 80%, there's no extra money. They, they're not asked for any extra money, but 80% of the money in there is dealing with sirens. So, we already have lost, according to my knowledge, we lost five teachers. Uh, it might be, not be all teachers, I know employees. Uh, they moved to other counties, like I was telling about the sheriff position, because we, uh, the school board has not given the contracts. They haven't given the contracts because we haven't approved the budget. I know it's been mentioned that some counties pass the contracts out before the budget, but we haven't done it in the past. And they're waiting. And they're waiting on this budget to be passed before we lose other teachers. Uh, not only teachers, other employers. Because, uh, you, like I said, you have some teachers that, or some employees that didn't need to have the contract by July. July the twelfth is starting to work. Or some may al- already be working. But that's why I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, but I'll wait till other supervisors speak first, uh, if they have anything. But I'm not in favor of cutting anything. I'm not in favor of cutting anything that's gonna hurt people as high as gas, food, and other necessities. That they would lose their job because the school board had to get rid of some of them because we cut the budget, and they have to cut employers. So that's why I'm.
Mr. Tadlock, how you wanna handle this school budget? You wanna start somewhere, or? Or does the board members wanna make some suggestions?
I don't see where you can start anywhere, as I said, they, they're not asked for an additional funds, you can't cut the funds out of that.
Well, I'll, I'll start off. Gotta start somewhere. First, I'd like to say, um, I've gotten a lot of phone calls, from citizens, school staff, um, some for it, some against it. But I appreciate everybody that's called me, that's been very respectful, um, had some good conversations. So I, I do appreciate all the phone calls, and I really appreciate people being respectful in, uh, calling. Um, I don't have a problem in level funding the school. I believe it was Ms. Crockett that attended a couple of meetings on behalf, and spoke on behalf of the school on two occasions, and she used the word balance. And she referenced that balance in the school system. I've referenced that word balance in the community. And the word balance between the two boards. And right now, um, we're struggling between the two boards. I don't have an issue level funding the school. I'd like to see it quarterly appropriations, based on a quarterly meeting with the school board, with the school board members there, and the superintendent, and the finance director, president, and have the supporting documents of expenditures from the previous quarter. I think we need to, the two boards need to come together, we gotta communicate. And the one way of doing it is have these meetings and have a purpose for the meetings.
Okay.
And I think, you know, we need to think fairly on this. We need, if we're gonna do these quarterly meetings and the board approves of this, we already had discussions on saying we're gonna meet quarterly, so it's not an extra meeting for anyone. But we need to have information ahead of time, so we need to put two weeks ahead on that. But we also need to be respectful to the school board and not send them a list of questions the day of the meeting. We need to have a cutoff time to receive information when they ask for information. And I, I just think it's, I guess I'd be using the word balance again, we gotta have some balance. And that's a start. We gotta communicate.
All right, any other board members wanna comment or anything, or? Well, nobody wants to comment. I'll go along with level funding them. So, but I also go along with putting it into quarterly appropriations. And we will need documentation, and we'll need a meeting with their finance director and at least Holly Wargro, if the board members want to attend, that's fine too. But we've gotta have communication. And I'll, I'll agree with Mr. Brand on comments, we don't need to put comments the day before a meeting. Unless there is no other choice, and I think that should be an option right there. And if the board is there, maybe we can get an answer then. With the two boards there, finance director there, and Holly Wargro there, we can get answers back and forth. We can comment, talk, that's the only way we don't get it worked, the emailing back and forth does not work very well.
I would add, if we're gonna say it has anything, request of information is, say, two weeks prior. Conversely, the information is supplied to the board a period of time prior to the day before or day of too. Because we can do two-week requests, but if we don't get that information until the day or the day before, doesn't give us a chance to review also. So there needs to be a, I don't have a problem with setting the date far, however you want, forever, but there needs to be a date in which we are given the information that we ask.
Well, that documentation should be given to us, say, a week before the board meeting? Five days, if you wanna call it five days, it's fine. I don't have a bit of problem with that. I'm, I'm, I don't have any, I think I can go through it in that timeframe.
I'd say no less than three days.
All right, no less than three days. All right.
I still think we need to do what, I, I agree with Jimmy about those quarterly meetings with the board boards.
Yeah, we, we need quarterly meetings. All right, anyone else have any comments?
Only thing I would add is, in any resolution, since the general assembly hasn't even acted yet, and the governor's proposed amendments, I would recommend, and I'd so move either as an amendment to whatever, is that we include some language that whatever, all departments, including the school, it's subject to the state proving their budget. Well, I mean, we're, the, our budget is built upon them, and, you know, the general assembly, I don't know what's coming in tomorrow or Friday, but the governor's got thirty-five amendments, and who knows what they're gonna do, and then once the general assembly does something, then the governor can go in there and either veto the whole thing or do line item veto. So we're not sure, we're assuming a lot of things, and we all know what you do when you're suing.
Yeah, we know, we get, we know what we're getting when that happens.
But I, I, that's one of the things I'd request is subject to the general assembly. Figures as they, well, you know, something, subject to the gen- to the general assembly approving a budget by July the first. Or something, some language, you know, you don't have an idea what I'm talking to Mr. Tadlock.
Sure, we, we can, uh, but, uh, you're talking about putting something in the appropriations resolution.
Correct.
All right, anybody else wanna comment, 'cause I would love to get a budget approved.
Yeah, we need it.
Oh, does someone wanna make a motion?
Just for clarification, so the board is looking at level funding for the request being made for fiscal year twenty-three? From the schools?
And that would mean that would be the same amount of appropriation coming from the county as it was last year?
Correct.
All right.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm trying to get clarification and make sure I understand what the.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know too. Is that what the board's intention is?
Yes.
So, same amount of money we appropriated last, or this, still this fiscal year?
And that's what their request is?
Yeah, that's what.
From, from the county.
Right, right.
That's their request.
Uh-huh. And that's, that's the motion I'm making.
All right, well, just one quick second, on the, in your budget, there is one small, uh, on your instruction line item. It was fifteen million, two seventy-five, five five five. That needs to be corrected, there was a, um, modification in that to reflect, uh, the current fiscal year's appropriation. And so that, the true figure should be fifteen million, one ninety-six, nine eight nine. And that, that has been fixed on, uh, displayed on the school department's website as well.
Got you.
Okay. All right, so that would give us, what, twenty million, nine, nine hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars? Is that?
That would be a total budget of twenty million, nine eleven, eight ninety.
Eight ninety, right?
Correct.
Okay. Eight ninety or nine ninety?
Uh, eight, I have eight, eight ninety.
Eight nine, all right. All right.
That's my motion.
So you're looking for a motion, all right?
That's my motion. Pass.
All right, you gonna?
We're gonna. Twenty million. Nine one nine, eight ninety.
That's, that's your dollar amount.
Right.
All right. We want to amend your motion by putting it into quarterly appropriations with quarterly meetings before another appropriation is made.
That's good.
Well, we can make that part of the appropriations resolution, okay? I think it would be a little bit cleaner that way.
All right.
If, if that's what the board wishes to do.
That'd be all right. If that, if that's what you need.
Yeah, the, the first motion I would need is the total budget, and that includes the school and the county budget.
All right, so what's your dollar amount on that now?
That's, the total budget is forty-five million, eight hundred fifty thousand, seven ninety-eight.
Forty-five?
Forty-five million, eight hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars.
That's my help.
All right, so, so you wanna start off with a motion for that?
Correct.
All right.
That's my motion.
All right, Jim, you made the motion. I'll second it. All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Read, read this whole motion out now, is it?
What was that again? I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Read the motion with this.
All right. The motion is to approve forty-five million, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Seven hundred ninety-eight, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars.
That's the county and school.
That's county and school.
And school.
Is anything else you need to add to that, Mr. Tadlock?
No, sorry.
Now, that doesn't include the appropriation resolution, though.
That, that comes later.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion on that? All right, no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right. Now, what do you need, Mr. Tadlock?
All right, uh, in your packet, you have the resolution for setting the tax rate. Real estate would remain at sixty-one cents per one hundred dollars. We are modifying discussions with the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer. That portion, it's the thirty-five percent assessment ratio per the NADA on all taxable motor vehicles as defined in sections fifty-eight point one, thirty-five oh three, A three, A four, A five, and A nine of the Code of Virginia in order to offset the recent appreciation and values of the vehicles. This fiscal, or this year, it's forty percent, and they're looking to reduce that to thirty-five percent.
They do not anticipate that having any impact on res- uh, income?
There, that, that's one of the reasons that they are reducing that, so we don't get a huge influx of, not saying that there still won't be some, because we just don't know what the, that magic number is, but that, that is to try and reduce the total increase coming in. But all of the other figures are the same.
Other words, attempt to have level funding of income from what we had last year.
That's correct.
All right, any other discussion on that?
Well, level funding of what we've put in the budget for this year, on the revenue side.
All right, any other discussion? Not, can I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, got a motion, have a second. Long? All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? All right. All right, Mr. Tadlock, what else do you need?
All right, next is the appropriations resolution. And let's see. As of right now, the, the total appropriations would be thirty-nine million, two hundred, two thousand, two thirty.
Thirty-nine million, two hundred and? I, I lost him, Mr. Tadlock.
Thirty, thirty-nine million, two hundred, two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
All right, any discussion on that?
Now, you can modify including quarterly appropriations here, or what would you?
You, if you wanna do quarterly appropriations, that's where we would need to do this, 'cause I would need to break that out. If you're looking to do the first quarter, that would be the total appropriations, that would be included in the total appropriations, and then the unappropriated monies would be the other three quarters.
All right, so you, excuse me, you're looking for a motion on that, and if we want, if we put it in quarterly appropriations, this is the time you're looking for it.
I, I would need to break that out. Yes, all right, if you need exact numbers, uh, first get direction from the board that that's what you wanna do, but you may wanna take a five-minute break while I try and break out those numbers.
All right, let's do that, so.
Let's, let's have a five-minute recess. Start it back. All right, Mr. Tadlock, have you had time enough to do what you need?
I, I think so, Mr. Chairman. So the total appropriation would be twenty-three million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. And what that includes is quarterly appropriations to the school board by categories.
What's that number again, Mr. Tadlock? Twenty?
It's, um, five million, um, excuse me, the total appropriation is twenty-three million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Okay.
So the, the total appropriation, the quarter, quarterly appropriations to the school division would be five million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine seventy-two, fifty cent. So the total unappropriated monies would be fifteen million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cent.
All right.
But just, just make it clear, the board would have to do, and I just double-checking to make sure this is what you all are looking for, to do supplemental appropriations for each quarterly. each quarterly payment.
Is that the board's request?
Yeah.
All right. All right, everybody, uh, get, uh, Mr. Tadlock's figures?
Yep.
All right?
Yeah.
Who's gonna make the motion?
I make the motion that we do the appropriation resolution with the changes to the school by category, and also including language that is subject to the general assembly approving a state budget. That affects everybody's budget, not just school board.
I research your motion, that's all I'm...
Prove the resolution with the changes as to the figure, uh, quarterly. So it's gonna be what Mr. Tadlock stated.
Oh, you're putting it categories, you said?
Yes. Because that's what's in the resolution, too.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second on the motion, all right? Have a motion, second, have any other discussion?
Yes, I will not be supporting this motion, I agree with all the parties, except for the quarterly appropriations, I don't see where it's gonna benefit, I don't see the benefits of going to a quarterly appropriation, it's gonna create more work. And, I, I can't, uh, no one has shown me the benefits of it yet. So therefore, I will not support the motion as stated.
All right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, what else do you need?
All right, the last motion I need is for the personal property tax relief resolution that you have in your packet.
All right, so everybody's seen that? Any discussion, or can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the no car tax resolution.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right. All right, anything else you need, or wish you'd do?
Not regarding the budget, I thank you all for, for your help on the budget.
All right. Any other budget items we need to discuss right now? Any other comments? Before, before we move on. All right, if you don't have anything else, Mr. Tadlock and board members, we'll move on to your second item, supplemental approche- appropriation for the sheriff's department.
Yes, sir, we're trying to get some of these items in, uh, before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so, asking the board to transfer the funds from, uh, ten two eighty-five court security fund to the general fund in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy cent for court security, uh, for supplemental appropriation to thirty-one oh two, one thousand four.
No mood.
All right, we got a motion, I said, I got a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? All right.
Next item I have is, um, contract for services with ServiceMaster. They are asking for an increase in their monthly service fee. We are currently paying four thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, and they are requesting a three hundred dollar increase of five thousand, seventy-five dollars. Currently, we are taking these monies from our, um, ARPA funds.
It's a pleasure to board.
Do you, do you see a benefit in, uh...
Having that service, Mr. Tadlock?
It, it has helped with the, the additional cleanings, uh, that we've needed. Uh, long-term, it may be something that the board may wish to, um, think about a little bit differently, but, uh, as of right now, having the, uh, ARPA funds, uh, if the board wants to do maybe, uh, a six-month extension to it for the time being, and then revisit it back in, uh, in December timeframe.
Is this at any time period on this contract? I mean, locked in?
It, the current one that we have, um, is that way. I've been rolling that forward with the, uh, with ServiceMaster.
We can do it, just continue it for three months, six months, or what, I look, we can evaluate some other things?
Uh, the, I will talk to, um, Mr. Millstead and verify that we can do that, that would be all right to do. If, if it's not, I'll certainly bring it back to the board, but, um, that would be my suggestion at this point in time, just do it through December.
Yeah, uh, clause number twelve in the contract stated this, uh, continuing effect on the date, but may be terminated by either party by giving thirty days written notice by certified mail. So it's, it's not for specific terms.
Yeah.
So we, if, if after December, we feel we could give it, we could terminate.
So in November?
Yeah.
All right.
So I move that we approve this contract through December to be reviewed in November, to determine whether we continue with it.
All right. Got a motion, who's, who's seconded? All right. Got a motion, a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, Mr. Tadlock?
Uh, the next item I have is, um, request for, to submit an application to the DEQ competitive litter grant. Um, the anti-litter committee is requesting to submit a grant to DEQ for, in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Reason we're bringing that up now is the due date is July fifteenth, our next board meeting is July fourteenth, so it wouldn't give a whole lot of time for, um, filling out the application.
And there's no match to this, we understand, right?
To my knowledge, there is no match.
It's none.
All right, it's a pleasure to board.
I move that we approve the, uh, seeking a grant for DEQ for litter.
Second. Got a motion and, and a second? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Tadlock, you have anything else?
Uh, just an update, the last item I have is Hobbs and Associates will be here next Tuesday, um, to work on the Aon units, uh, for this building, so just wanted to give board an update on that.
Okay.
With that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have nothing else on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
All right. Have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all, ladies and gentlemen, for coming to the board meeting, and I'm glad we got this budget over with.
I'll be happy when the general assembly gets theirs over with.